If you're willing and able, if you would consider standing for the invocation, and remain standing for the flag, please.
Blessed is day with chances to grow with friendship and sense of community. With work to do and leisure to enjoy, let us be positive influence of those we meet. May we act with integrity and truth in all things, giving the best of ourself in all we do, living in appreciation of the gift itself of today. Blessed is meeting and blessed is day. Amen. Our pledge lifted to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm calling a regular public commission meeting, nine o'clock a.m., Tuesday, April 1st, to order. And I assure you, everything on this agenda is good. It's not any April Fool stuff. I'll do that in there. Before we accept the agenda, I would like to recognize two new employees. One would be Nitra Swift, our new HR director. If you'll stand up. Thank you. Welcome aboard. The second one is Jim Walker, our county manager. Welcome aboard. We look forward to working with both of y'all. Having said that, does somebody move we approve the agenda as published?
So moved.
I have a motion from District 1, second from District 5. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we have an approval of an employment agreement. Hand out number one for the county manager, and I must, it's lengthy, I'm gonna paraphrase it. Number one is the salary, and this is a typical manager-type employer-relationship employment agreement. Salary would be $145,000 per year. He'll get $500 per month for automobile expenses. He will get up to, not to exceed, $7,500 for moving expense with receipts, and he will get three weeks vacation. So the board has had this since we employed the guy. So does somebody move that we accept this employment agreement as published?
So moved.
Have a motion from District 3?
Second.
Second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, I would like to ask our communication director to read the National Crime Victims' Rights Week.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This morning, we have a proclamation in recognition of National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 6th through 12th, 2014. Whereas Americans are victims of more than 22 million crimes each year, and these crimes also affect family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers, often leaving a lasting physical, emotional, or financial impact on people of all ages and all economic, racial, and social backgrounds. And whereas in 1984, the Crime Victims Fund was established by the Victims of Crime Act to provide a permanent source of support for crime victim services and compensation through fines and penalties paid by convicted federal offenders. And whereas in Georgia, our legislators saw the importance of enacting a similar form of support through fines paid by local offenders, which enables crime victim services mandated by law to be carried out by local district attorney and solicitor general offices. And whereas, these federal, state, and local funds support assistance programs which provide support to child victims of violence and sexual abuse, stalking victims, survivors of homicide, victims of drunk driving crashes, victims of domestic and sexual violence, and property crimes, affirming that those who commit such crimes should be held accountable for the impact of their actions. And whereas, the victims' assistance community faces new challenges to reach and serve all victims, including victims of elder and financial abuse, human trafficking, and cybercrime, and the time has come to place a new emphasis on learning what works in reaching underserved victims and meeting all victims' needs. Whereas National Crime Victims' Rights Week, April 6th through 12th, 2014, provides an opportunity to celebrate the energy and commitment that launched the Victims' Rights Movement, inspired its progress, and continues to advance the cause of justice for crime victims. And whereas, the Henry County District Attorney's Office and the Office of the Solicitor General are joining forces with other community victim service providers, criminal justice agencies, and concerned citizens throughout Henry County to raise awareness of victims' rights and observe National Crime Victims' Rights Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that April 6th through 12th, 2014 shall be known as National Crime Victims' Rights Week in Henry County, during which time we reaffirm our county's commitment to respect and enforce victims' rights throughout this week and throughout the year, and express our appreciation for those victims and survivors who have turned personal tragedy into a motivating force to build a more just community. This first day of April, 2014, signed by Chairman Tommy N. Smith, witnessed by Shay Matthews, county clerk.
Thank you so much. Let's get a photo up. I would like anybody that came here for this, if you've come to stand with us and is supporting this, come stand with us as well. Next on the agenda, we have two consent items. The following items shall be considered on a consent agenda. Before voting on the consent items, the chair will provide opportunity to add or delete these items. Item one is a resolution request and acceptance of a donation to the police department from the city of Stockbridge. In reason I put this under consent, I understand there would be no representative from the city of Stockbridge to present this, and it's in the amount of $1,000. Seeing no objection on that. Second would be a resolution request and authorization to extend the consultative agreement with David Williams, who is now under contract with the interim community development director from Ms. Matthews. And what it does, if I'm not mistaken, it reads, extend his contract to manage our transit for another month. So having said that, does somebody move we add to, delete, or accept the agenda items as published?
So moved.
I have a motion from District 5, second from District 4. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, public safety, a resolution request and authorization to purchase turnout gear for the fire department. Chief Brad Johnson.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm here this morning to get approval or gain approval for to purchase 10 sets of turnout gear. It's a line, five fours turnout jackets and 10 turnout pants. This will be for our recruit program. This is about to graduate in the next few weeks. This is a contracted purchase from a contracted vendor for the amount of $17,699. Just asked for approval for this item this morning.
Does anybody have a question to the chief? If not, we have a motion in the book. Correction, a resolution in the book. Does somebody move? We approve it?
Move to approve.
I have a motion from District 2?
Second.
Second from District 1. All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution request and authorization to accept Amendment Number 2 of FY 2014 DHS Coordinated Transportation Grant. Ms. Matthews.
The first item we have, we actually have three items before you all this morning. Item number one is the Georgia Department of Human Services Contract Amendment Number 2 for elderly persons and persons with disabilities. What we are asking is for you all to allow us to process the Contract Amendment Number 2 for the FTA 5310 funds, which do provide services to our elderly and disabled individuals through the Georgia Department of Human Services. This does not require a local match. Myself or David Williamson will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners pertaining to the Georgia Department of Human Services Coordination Transportation Grant Amendment Number 2. What it amounts to, the original grant for fiscal year 2014 was $428,593.13, whereas Amendment 1 was to obligate the funds in the amount of $22,594.14. Amendment Number 2 now obligates an additional $175,000, and whereas the Henry County Board of Commissioners can collect up to $580,995.99 in transportation fees. Be it resolved that the Henry County Board of Commissioners agree to and accept Amendment to the coordinated grant. Does somebody? To accept the resolution. We have a motion to accept the resolution as read and published?
Second.
We have a second, we have a second, we have a first. We have a motion by District 2, have a second by District 5. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much. Next one, development correction, resolution requesting authorization to apply for a GDOT 55311 rural transportation program presenter. Y'all are still standing.
Yes, sir. I think that's gonna be the next item, but we'll go ahead and get that one. This again is an approval for a fiscal year 2015 GDOT application to apply for 5311 rural transportation program operating in capital assistance for our Henry County Transit Department. Again, this is just the application for us to apply for the funding. At this time, we don't know what the amount will be, but we're just seeking authorization or permission from the board to apply for funding. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book for consideration, Georgia Department of Transportation Grant for Public Transportation Assistance Section 5311. And this would be for a period, for a period from July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015. This will pick up whoever one we just voted on Lee's office. Is that correct?
This one is GDOT that you're voting on. The other, the other one was for the Department of Human Services. So it's two separate agencies, two separate contracts. The very, the very last one is the GDOT transportation contract for 2015 or application.
I think we skipped over the one that was for the previous item. We went to the second item instead, we went to the third item instead of the second item, or at least that's how it is in my book. So this one, Chairman, is an application with GDOT. And then the final app, the final package item is for the Georgia Department of Human Services.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion from District 2, second from District 5. We might have already had a motion, I'm not sure. But anyway, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Now, we're moving to C. Is C correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Resolution request authorization to apply for a DHS coordinated transportation grant. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, sir. And the final item before you all this morning is an application and technical proposal that our Transit Department will be submitting on behalf of Henry County. It will be submitted to the Georgia Department of Human Services. Again, this proposal is for elderly persons and persons with disabilities. Again, we'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, somebody move, we adopt the approved resolution as published. I have a motion from District 1?
Second.
Second from District 2. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Thank you. Splus, we have a resolution request authorization to commence certain Splus for dirt road surface treatment project, Rocky. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. Splus 4 was approved by the voters in November of 2013. Splus 4 collections start today, April 1st, 2014, and will continue for the next six years. Splus staff recommends more approval to commence the following Splus 4 dirt road surface treatment projects. For District 2, Farmer Drive in the amount of $60,000, Fields Drive in the amount of $75,000, Floyd Drive in the amount of $45,000, Southmont Carmel Road in the amount of $75,000, and Jones Drive in the amount of $85,000. District 2 prioritized for year one a total of $340,000 for surface treatment for dirt roads. For District 3, Butler's Bridge, Butler's Bridge Drive in the amount of $100,000, Candler Road in the amount of $40,000, East Night Road in the amount of $40,000, SQ Road in the amount of $40,000, and North Bridges Road in the amount of $20,000. District 3 prioritized for year one a total of $240,000 for surface treatment for dirt roads.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir.
I'm gonna camp out here for just a minute, because I got several questions, and then I got a comment. Are these, these projects are out of the Splus 4, right?
Splus 4, that's correct.
Are we paying for these as we go?
Yes, sir.
So we're not borrowing any money to do these projects, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Lot of misinformation going on about borrowing money, and I think we need to probably clear a little bit of this up. One thing that comes to mind is, is back during, and I believe it was Splus 2, I want to say that was under Mr. Maddox's term as the chairman. A lot of work under that was bonded, correct? Do you know?
Correct.
Okay. Bonded money, is bonded money borrowed money, or is it just, or is it, they just give it to us?
It's borrowed money, and you gotta, you gotta pay interest and, and all the fees. It's not, it's not free money.
And that bonded money, when, when we're bonding money, we have to pay that back, and we can't pay it off early, can we?
My understanding is no, sir.
Well, let's, let's take that a step further. Not only can we not pay it off early, but we have a fair amount of money. I'm not gonna ask you this question, and I'm not gonna ask the finance director this question, because I already know the answer, but I'm gonna state it anyway. There's a, there's a fair amount of money sitting in account that we could have paid a lot off on the bonding several months ago. But we can't pay it off early, because we have to pay it on that time, because there's not, there's not, no such thing as a prepayment penalty. You can't pay it off early. That's correct. I already know that, so I'm gonna just make that as a statement. The misinformation that's going around is that we have allowed certain members of this board, including myself, have talked about and looked for a secondary source of funding. Now, keep in mind, bonded money is borrowed money. But if we borrow some money against the Splus proceeds that will be coming in, and we hold that to about 55% of what that individual's gonna get, then actually, we come out ahead because we can pay that off early with no penalty. So I mean, you know, for, for those to say that every, I think every Splus, I don't know about Splus 1, so I'm making a statement that may not be entirely true, but I think pretty much every Splus has been bonded. There again, what is bonded money? It's borrowed money, right?
Correct.
Okay. So here's, here's the situation as I see it. Lot of misinformation going around that, that certain members of this board allowed other districts, now, I'm not talking about district, any district in particular, but other districts. Just to be sure that we understand each other, had we not have bonded, which is borrowed money, I wanna make sure we understand, I'm gonna say it a lot, so that people get the idea. If we hadn't have been able to bond Eagles Landing Parkway, Rock Quarry Road Bridge, and a number of intersections, then we would not be through billing them today. That's the first thing. The second thing, had we not bonded that money, which there again, it's borrowed money. Had we not borrowed or bonded the money for Eagles Landing Parkway, we would have never been able to get the federal help that we got that allowed us to put that bridge over Rock Quarry Road. Would you say that's correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. When we take that and put that all into consideration, it took our staff, which did a great job, and myself included, I'm not saying that I did a great job, but I went a number of times with the chairman and others on the board to the state DOT to make sure that we had the shovel-ready project in order for us to get it. There were 82 parcels or plus or minus that had to either be purchased, condemned, whatever, and the condemnation was not because nobody wanted to work with, because corporations own that property, and we couldn't get in touch with them.
Correct.
But we had to have that done, along with all the engineering and everything else for the environmental, the issues over the bridges, over the different, over the railroad track and over the wetlands. So we had to have those in place, and environmental had to be done, and couldn't be over six months old. I believe was six months was the magic number. Is that right?
That's correct.
So there again, without the borrowed bonded money, we would not be able to do that. I just wanna make sure that from, from a history lesson, every single Splus has been bonded. A certain amount of it, maybe not all of it. So at the end of the day, that was, that was the main thing. You know, for misinformation to be out on the street, and, and people to say, well, you know, Bowman, or, or, or Brian, or any of the rest of us approved borrowing money or want to borrow money, there's gonna be a couple of significant road projects that you cannot do and do on piecemeal. It will cost you three times as much and take you twice as long. There's, I believe there's one coming up in District 1, that's gonna come up sometime next year. There's a significant road project. You're gonna have to bid that out. You can't do that in phases and wait on the money to come in. I think it's very important for everyone to understand that you can't do everything. District 4 is in a great shape, because we can do ours on as we go, only, not because we're that smart, it's because all of our large-scale projects are completed. Had we had a big road project coming in, we would have to borrow or bond, it's the same thing, money in order to do those. Mr. Chair, I yield the floor. Thank you very much.
Anybody else have any comments for the Africa, District 2?
I'd add to it a little bit, is that, you know, what I've explained, I was at the city of Hampton last week for their city council meeting, is that each district gets a little over $3 million a year. And I know like, for instance, one of the things that's been promised for two Splus but has never actually come to be until Splus 4 was the senior center in Hampton. Well, we budgeted $3.5 million. The reason, I took advantage of the line of credit, and I wanna use that word again, line of credit, is because you can do the math and see, because it's $340,000 that we're doing on surface treatments in District 2, that is going back to Splus 2 and Splus 3. There were a lot of promises that have not been fulfilled that we're looking to fix with this Splus. So you can quickly see through the math, $3.5 million plus this $340,000, plus we have a few more transportation projects. You can't do it all, but that doesn't mean that we can't use the line of credit, make sure we stay below, well below, matter of fact, I've had quite a few meetings with the finance director. I don't think we're going to even need to use that much, because collections have been good with the Splus coming in. But what a great opportunity is that instead, unlike bonding where you have to go through the full amortization table and pay all the interest, and usually send that money up north to, to the bonding attorneys and, and the interest, we're gonna be able to, to do these projects, complete them, and then I think I'm not gonna have any debt that will last more than just a few months, because the collections are strong, come in, pay off those lines of credits, and we get these projects that have been promised, I mean, going on decades. I mean, when you're talking about getting into your third Splus, and you couldn't complete, getting a senior slash rec center, getting some of these roads paved and surface treatments, you've gotta do something to fulfill these obligations and promises that were not made and fulfilled in the past. And I appreciate, you know, Commissioner Bowman going and explaining some of that.
Anybody else have any comments, questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book for the Henry County Board of Commissioners, Splus Resolution to approve the commencement of Splus 4 dirt road surface treatments for District 2s and 3s. Does somebody move in that direction?
So moved.
Have a motion from District 3?
Second.
Second from District 4. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Resolution Request and Approval of a Non-Revenue Street Light at the Jonesboro Road-Dutch Town. Mr. McMichael, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Board members. We do have, seek approval this morning of a non-revenue street light at Jonesboro Road in Dutch Town. Our DOT has recognized the importance of lighting the intersection in, in order to avoid any accidents or to enhance the safety. Henry County DOT requests that the agreement for the non-revenue street light at the intersection of Jonesboro Road and Dutch Town Road be approved.
Anybody have any questions? Yes, sir. District 2.
I just wanna make the comment, 'cause I know, just coming from the school board side of things, that that, there's, if you go down Dutch Town Road, we have three schools that are right down there, so it's not uncommon to have a lot of traffic at certain times coming out from Dutch Town Road, coming onto Jonesboro Road, and as we all know, Jonesboro Road is getting busier and busier. So I think this is a good safety move from, you know, DOT to, to move towards this. So I just wanted to kinda give some background in the fact that there's a lot of traffic, a lot of things going on, and this can't help do anything but help the safety in that area.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book. Somebody consider?
So moved, approved.
Have a motion District 2?
Second.
Second from District 3. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Resolution Question Award of a Bid for Liquid Asphalt Emulsion. Terry.
Good morning, again. Good morning, Board. Department of Transportation requires liquid asphalt emulsion for various county projects. Having a contract for this material allows quick access to the product without necessity of bidding each time the product is required, and guarantees prices will remain firm for the contract price. This item was bid out, and we had two vendors responding. We, we request that the bid be to the low bidder, which was Blackledge Emulsions. And if you will look, these prices are tied to the liquid asphalt and index, so whatever the stated monthly price is of asphalt, that's how we get our price from, our emulsions. We found that this was the best way to bid it out, is just tie it to the, to the price of liquid asphalt. This is also TAC, if you want the common name for it. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have any questions? If not, have a resolution in the book requesting award a bid for liquid asphalt emulsion.
Moved to approve.
Have a motion from District 2?
Second.
Second from District 1. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Resolution Question Award of a Bid for Crushing Concrete and Asphalt Millings.
Good morning, again, Board members. The Department of Transportation has a very large stockpile of concrete and asphalt millings that have been removed during county road projects. These millings need to be re-crushed, reduced in size, and the crushing will be done on site, and the crush of asphalt millings will be used on the Splus surface treatments on the 10 roads that I just mentioned before. In addition to the 10 roads that are on Splus 4, there's one road is called, is on a Splus 2 list, it's Laney Drive. I have placed on the overhead, you can, the amount of asphalt crushing it's gonna take for each road, roughly around $93,500. County DOT has approximately about 20,000 tons of asphalt millings in their yard, and it's gonna cost around $100,000 to crush that, and the money for this will come from Laney Drive, this Splus 2 funds, and from the 10 projects mentioned before on Splus 4.
And also, in addition, we're gonna crush some concrete. If you ride through my yard, you'll see some piles of concrete. We will also include crushing this concrete back into basically what y'all may call crush or run, and we can use that either on dirt roads or backfilling or whatever. So it's a way of, of, instead of hauling our concrete to a landfill, we can re-crush this and use it, again, just like crushed stone, or as base material, or as dirt road materials. So this portion of it will be coming out of Henry County DOT. So this portion of it will be coming out of Henry County DOT funds. So that's why me and Rocky are both up here, we have two sources of funding for award of this bid. So when they come out and crush the millings, at the same time, they'll go ahead and crush the asphalt. I mean, the concrete as well, sorry.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Kerry, don't you see it says Laney Drive? Don't we have a surface treatment project in May that's going to be from, in South Laney Road?
Yeah, this is that one. It is.
It is South Laney then?
It is.
Okay.
And we're going to try to do most of these roads during the month of May. It will be, timing will be kind of critical on this one. That's why we need to get this done today. When they come out and crush it, as they're crushing this millings and all, we plan on turning around and putting them right back down on these dirt roads. So. If all goes well as he crushes them, I hope to be placing them on the road.
Anybody else have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book requesting approval of the Crushing Concrete and Asphalt Milling.
So move.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Next one, Resolution Question Approval of an Amendment to the Authorized List of Road for Use of Speed Detection Devices. You know, it's probably coincidental we're using this, but I've been seeing a lot of this on TV, like as late as last night, about radar and laser and, so I'm, I know Henry County has always been up to speed, so to speak, of keeping our roads certified.
Yes, sir. That's why we're coming before today. We have some, some changes that need to be done and handled properly. We came to the Board in December of 2013 and requested to revise the radar permit. And the reason we wanted to revise it then was to include some school zone changes and a change in speed limit on River Road. The Board did adopt that and sent it off. GDOT did not send that on to the state because some more changes were requested. So they came back and looked at these additional roads, and if you look in your package, you will see the, the changes that'll be on this radar. The first one in the column is what they call on system on state routes, and these were all the school zone changes. Then on the off system, you will see the changes again on some school zones. Then toward the bottom third of the page, you'll see River Road. Again, since that one that we did in December never went off, I want to make sure that we include River Road. That would be reduced from 45 to 35. There's also been a request from GDOT. Now, this next request came from GDOT, not Henry County DOT, for a change in the speed limit on East Lake Parkway to increase from 45 to 55 from State Route 42 to 155. Then an additional change is on Jackson Lake Road. We want to decrease the speed limit from 55 to 45. And the last one is a change, or it is an addition, on Davis Road in Locust Grove. We have two Davis Roads. This is the Davis Road in Locust Grove. Davis Road from 42 to South Ola, which is .94 miles at 35 miles per hour. So the process for this, if the Board agrees with this and signs it, we'll send it back to GDOT. GDOT send it downtown public safety, goes back to Georgia DOT and then back to us as certified. This process usually takes, thinking about two months, three months, does that sound right Shay? Something like that, two to three months for us to get it back. So, of course, we, NPD has been with us on this real closely and they're aware that they can't run any of these changes until we get this approved list back.
Anybody have any questions? Do you have a motion correction? You have a resolution in the book, Henry County Board of Commissioners, Requesting Approval of an Amendment, amended list of roadways for use of speed detection devices, if somebody would consider.
So move.
We have a motion District Three?
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Next, we have a resolution question approval of the cost of employee for medical and dental insurance. Angie. Saul Rose is the Budget Director. Good morning.
Good morning. At a call meeting on March the 10th, staff presented options regarding the cost of the medical and dental insurance. The cost of the medical will increase 14.3% and the dental will increase 2%. The Benefit Review Committee recommended the, at the March 14th, several options, and the Board asked for staff to present to you the 75, 80, 75, 85, and 95% employee county contribution. The increase at this moment is 1.8 million increase on the health insurance. And before you, you have the breakdown of the 75, 85, 95% for the employee cost and the county cost. Just know that if we pick 75, 85, 95%, that our revenues will need to reflect an increase in July, for July 15th budget.
Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comment? The only comment, I would say that last year, the, because of time constraints and time got closer, this Board approved the, last year, the increase was 1.9 million.
Yes, sir.
The Board absorbed 1.9 million, which is 100%. I indicated last year that my preference for this year would be obviously for the employees to, to pay 100%. Having said that and evaluated what y'all gave us, and you finally gave it to us on a form, a large enough where we can read.
Thanks Shay.
I would, I would favor the 75% increase passed on to the employee and, and the county picking up 25%. And having said that, the 25% of our portion would have to come out of fund balance, just like we come out of fund balance last year. So that's, that's just my thoughts and my comments. So I open the floor to, to people surrounding me and let them voice their opinion. District Four.
I feel very comfortable with the 75, 25. I think we had a lot of conversation with the committee on that and, and working with the employees as well. So the 75, 25, that's, that's an increase. That's not to say that next year we may have to take another look. Who knows what the insurance is going to do? But, you know, before we, like the Chair said, we, we paid for all of it last year.
Yes, sir.
This year, the employee's going to have to help some. And we finally got off of furlough days several years ago and we were able to, we wanted a 2% raise last year, but it would cause a budget amendment, so we went with the 1.8. I believe that we should push very hard in the coming budget to have another 2% increase to try and catch up if, for no other reason for COLA. I mean, it's, you're not really getting a raise, you're just, and you're not getting caught up. You'll never get caught up for what we've had to lose during this, the recession that we've been through over the past six years. But anyway, having said that, I mean, if it takes a motion, I would make a motion that we move with the 75, 25, Mr. Chair.
Do you have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second from District One. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion on the floor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Public comments? We have anybody sign up for public comments today? Okay. Chairman and Commissioners, comments? Anybody like to be recognized now from the floor? District Four? District One? District Three? District Two? District Five? Okay, no comments. County Manager? You can get up and say good morning because this is your day two, and what we decided is what we ought to be when they're upcoming, right?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. County Attorney, do you have any comments? The upcoming meeting is Tuesday, April the 15th, 2014, at 6:30 PM at a regular meeting. Tuesday, May the 6th, 2014, 9 AM. And Tuesday, May the 20th. Could we discuss that? May the 20th is going to be election day. Would, would, would it be appropriate if we could change that date now or would you want me to change it later? I know the Chair has the, has the authority to change a meeting. And if y'all have, if y'all have no problem going on May the 20th, we'll just meet then. But I don't, I think that, for me, I'm not running this year, but it would be difficult for me to get focused on a.
What are you proposing? Because I think it makes complete sense to probably not.
I would have to give, I'd have to give some thought on what they, I would move it to.
Will we just double up on the, the 6th meeting or?
Well, now, we could, we could double up, we could counsel on May the 20th and, and double up on May the 6th, but not say doubling up because we would just put the stuff there. I mean, it's, so if y'all would consider just counseling the regular meeting on May the 20th, and I would put down for elections, and everybody would understand that we're not opting out just to.
Yeah, we close the schools, some for the same purpose.
Does somebody move in that direction?
So move, Mr. Chair.
We have a motion to counsel May the 20th due to elections, primary. For 2014, we have a second, we have a motion from District Four, we have a second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. All opposed, same sign. Next, we need to, I would entertain a motion to adjourn Executive Session in accordance with the provision of OCGA political laws. I know we're going to talk about several significant personnel issues, acquisition of some real estate, and I don't know of any potential litigation. Okay, so we're not going to discuss any potential pending litigation. So if someone move, go into Executive Session. So move. We have a motion District Three. Have a second District One. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. So move. We're going into Executive Session. Thank you.